No, you can tell. Wait for it.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Hey Frank. Let's call the order of the meeting for a special meeting for number 20th. Thank you. Right to the flag, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which stands united, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call, please.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stone.
Yeah.
Alderman Tripp.
Here.
Alderman Bakara.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Don Combe.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey. Alderman Chris Linus. Alderman Meowman. Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Present.
Mr. Claire Quorum have a motion to accept consideration in previous minutes. Mr. Cassetti and second my Mr. Phil Oppone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public session. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Would anyone from the, yes, please name an address for the record, please?
My name is Ed Vips. 118 Myrtle Avenue in Ansonia. And I just got a short comment to make. That has to do with the Veterans Memorial Park. All I have to say is this. It is dedicated to the citizens of this town who went and served in the armed forces and were lucky enough to come home. And for the ones that weren't lucky enough to come home, those beautiful monuments are out there and dedicated to them. It is dedicated to the veterans and citizens of this town. I don't think it should be any other thing but for a veteran to be named after. And that's all I gotta say. I don't believe that that park should be used for anything but exactly for what it states. Veterans Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please come forward. Name an address for the record, please.
Dave Gaddison, 273 Derby Avenue, Derby. I am one of the principals for the Dr. King Bust Committee. And as I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First off, I want to say that I salute all veterans everywhere past and present for their service to our country and for the cause of freedom and democracy and the ideals that we stand for. I think it's appropriate that we open this meeting as we proclaim one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You know, we look at the climate in this country today. There's so much division. There's so much nastiness. It was a catalyst to say that inspired the minds of the young people and the people of our community at large to say we need something to bring this country back together. We need a new vision. And it was the idea of a young man that understood what Dr. King stood for. Justice and equality for all people. We need a bringing together. We need a healing in this country. Everybody but our eyes can see we're moving in the wrong direction. So to bring Dr. King and his ideals of brotherhood, peace and equality was a very honorable ideal. And so we set out a couple of years ago. This is not something that just happened last week. We've had fundraisers. There's been a lot of media attention, newspapers, television. There's been a lot of talk. I've had conversations with people from all walks of life in Ansonia and around the Valley. And they were honored to know that such a worldwide renowned figure, Nobel Peace Prize winner, would come and enhance what we have here in Ansonia. To have something like that here on Main Street would be wonderful businesses as people come to see what Ansonia has to offer. But more than that, we could be the light of the world. We can show the rest of the country that Ansonia and the people of the Valley, we can live and work together in peace and harmony. We can respect one another even when we disagree. No one's looking for any mess or any madness. No one wants to tarnish the legacy of Dr. King. We know that every person has two beings, an outer being and an inner being. Your outer being, you want to please your friends. Your inner being is responsible to God. We're not asking to disrespect anybody. On the contrary, we're trying to raise the level of awareness in our community and to show the country and the world that our residents are proud to live together in peace and harmony. So we understand that the park was named for the veterans. And we know that there's people that paid the ultimate price. But Dr. King was a man that received offers to make millions of dollars giving speeches, touring the country and the world, doing speeches, millions and millions. If they would just give up the cost. And he said, "I just want to do God's will." What is God's will for the people of Ansonia and the Valley?
Mr. Gass, excuse me. Usually we limit our comments to like three minutes, so could you kind of speed it up for us?
I can do that. Always thank you for your time and your attention. Like I says, we want to bring people together, not divide people. So moving forward, we've received no phone calls personally to sit down to talk or discuss, but we are open. We're open for peace. We're open to still let our light shine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please come forward. Name an address for the record, please.
Bruce Goldson, Jr., 160 Beaver Street, Ansonia. Ladies and gentlemen, born and raised here, a son of Ansonia. Played football, class of 1972, right here. Joined the service in 1975, served in the U.S. Army to 1995. That's 20 years. I'm sure there's not many that can claim that. And I also am a member of the Committee for Dr. Martin Luther King. But my brother in arms, I don't know where he went to, but he claimed that he stood for some veterans. Well, I'm a veteran. And I do believe in Dr. King's memorial being there. And I'll say this. It was in 1863 that a great man talked about a nation that was divided. And he said, "Now we are engaged in the grace of a war, testing whether that nation or any nation so conceived and so dedicated can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. Now we have come to dedicate a portion of that field as a final resting place for those here who gave their lives, who gave their lives as a final resting place." My sisters and brothers, it is not a final resting place, but it is a memorial. A memorial for myself, who served 20 years, for others who served, for those who gave their lives. And what did they give their lives for? For freedom, for justice. That, so that those that were underdogs, those that were depressed and those that were put down, those that were encaptured, practically turned into slaves, those that were killed, we went to war for freedom. Am I right about it? Same thing that Dr. King did. He went on a verbal war within these United States. But that particular war was to bring us all together. You can't ask for any greater hero that would give his life for those around him, those that he loved. He loved these United States as I did, as I do, for serving 20 years. I disagree with my fellow servicemen. I feel that the bust should go in the park. And I also feel that the park should be renamed. It should be Heroes Park. Heroes Park designed for great people who aspire to great things. And not only gave up their lives for the United States, but gave up their lives for freedom. We're all here about freedom. We hold on to it. We grasp to it. We reach for it, not only for ourselves, but for others. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not here to divide this city, but I am here to bring it together. It's just something to consider. Togetherness, unity, being as one. God bless you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public? Yes. Reverend Smith, please state your name and address, please.
Reverend Al Smith, New Haven, Connecticut, pastor of the great historic Macedonia Baptist Church. We, the Dr. King Bust Committee, decided to make a decision to pull this vote off because we don't want the Dr. King Bust to be a bone of contention. I want to say this, I'm greatly disappointed. There was a movie many years ago called Cool Hand Luke. And there was an expression in that movie. What we have here is a failure to communicate. No one has contacted anybody on that committee. The Bible says, "If I've got a problem with you, I need to go to you and not go to someone else." We have been open to meet. When there's good communication, there can be collaboration and cooperation. We don't hold anything against anybody that feels differently than we do. Would we personally believe that Dr. King's bust in this park would be a great addition? And by the way, I don't know if anybody here knows it, but not far from the nativity scene out there. That would be the location of the bust. I've been told that nothing but veterans in this park. Last time I checked, Jesus was not a veteran, although we are in favor of the nativity scene. We need to put aside petty differences because there can be some perceptual views that this is a racial issue. But we pulled the vote off the table because we don't want to be a part of that type of division. Dr. King was one who brought people together. And moving forward, we're going to attempt to continue to do this. I'm going to say this before I sit down. We want to thank Mayor David Cassetti for his involvement and his support. But you know what? As a politician, sometimes you've got to look beyond being reelected. Doing the right thing is always the right thing. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Reverend Smith, I will guarantee you that you will be contacted this week, probably tomorrow, to set some meetings up. Thank you for your time and your comments. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes. Come forward, Mr. Mizanti. Name an address for the record.
Edward Mizanti, 21 Castle Lane. I'd like to thank Mike Delicio. I called him the other day. It was a two-foot hole in front of McDonald's. He took care of that in a couple of hours. I brought up another thing last month. Howard Tenny Drive, and somebody chatted down. How about Howard Tenny Street? Take half of Lester High Street down, cut that in half, and turn that into Howard Tenny Street. Howard Street go from Olson Drive to Lester Street. So you cut that in half. Because High Street goes lowly down to Olson Drive. So you cut that in half. Okay, another question I have. Wouldn't they get a red tag the shopping center over there, West Side Shopping Center?
I mean, for what?
For closing it down. Because it looks like a disgrace. You're going to have a new police station over the bridge. People coming by that, it looks like a disgrace. Coming by, they're looking over there. You have one little thing that's open over there. You just condemn the whole thing. Because of having Howard Tenny Street, because somebody else on the board said, "No, not Olson Drive." So you take, you cut half of High Street down and put it right there. Because his building was not supposed to be taken down.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Name an address, please.
Greg Johnson, PO Box 6, Ansonia, NAACP. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, y'all leaders ahead. Wake up, wake up! I'm here to offer my support as well and strongly ask the individuals who are in charge and are making the decisions in regards to this bust, take in consideration everything that these young men said, what your children are looking at, and what the parents have to tell them what comes out of this. We can be proactive, reactive, or subjective. I'm hoping that we come out of this situation putting the Valley in a more positive light, showing that there's unity, equality, and understanding amongst our great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Stephen Kish, 21 Chester Street. Good evening, Alderman, mayor. I'm a vice president of the Ansonia Soccer Club. Even though I, you know, come here mainly for the soccer club, I've come here for pretty much all the youth sports of Ansonia and the fields that they are playing on currently. This past fall was a struggle for our club, given the fields and the amount of rain we got this year. Apesstone, with the water table being so high, was unplayable for almost four weeks this season. That's a third of our season. Couple of things just to bring up, because also here the same issues with softball, with football. I mean, all our kids are playing lots of sports that require field space. And the quality of the fields that we currently have in this town are very, very poor. No drainage, no maintenance besides grass cutting, nothing to improve the quality of the fields themselves. In addition to that, I just wanted to bring up my thoughts on the Board of Recreation. I know the Board, I'm there every month for the past six, seven years. I think it's probably time to revisit maybe disbanding that Board. I don't think the effectiveness is there. There is a paid city employee on there, on the Board, which I agree should be there. I believe that the club should be responsible for submitting reports to that director. But as for the committee itself, they have no poll, they have no, I mean, we need something done, it's not within their rights to do anything. So I think it's something maybe you guys should revisit and think about, you know, tweaking that a little bit. The same problems we've talked about for the last few years just don't get resolved. Answers, I have no answers to what we can do to make them better. I think we're limited in space in this town, but I think all the kids deserve, you know, some better fields to play on. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, public session's closed. Public official session.
Good evening, President Bakara, members of the Board of Aldermen residents in the great city of Ansonia. Let me begin by wishing everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving and peaceful, relaxing day with your family and friends. Thanksgiving is a time to be grateful for all we have and to help others who are less fortunate. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to recognize an Ansonia resident who has made a mission for the last nine years to provide food to families who are in need. This year alone, Noreen De Seekeis provided food for 35 families, raised and donated $500 to the local food bank, and provided four Target gift cards to disadvantaged families. There is a lot of work that goes into organizing and coordinating a successful food drive. And Noreen has been amazing in her dedication to this effort, going on for almost a decade now. At this time, I want to recognize Noreen and present her with the key to the city of Ansonia. Thank you all. This past weekend, we held the third annual Pinky Silverberg Boxing Championship at the Armory on Saturday night. As you know, this is a program near and dear to my heart. Boxing instilled in many ways the skills that were necessary to succeed in life. And that is my hope for the children, that going through this program, they are learning discipline, teamwork, and a fighting spirit. I thank all those who participated. There were 600 people in attendance to see the youth boxing exhibition and adult amateur boxing car. We also wanted to welcome the West Point boxing team from West Point Military Academy. There is a lot going on in Ansonia, and I want to call to your attention some of these events. There will be a Christmas tree lighting sponsored by Road Ready and Dunkin' Donuts Friday, November 30th at 6:00 PM at Veterans Park, brought to you by our cultural commission. Last year, several hundred were in attendance. We are hoping for the same this year. Our Valley Arts Council had a soft opening of their new gallery on Main Street. Stay tuned for the grand opening on December 11th. We are proud to have them in Ansonia to complement all the new and established restaurants and businesses on Main Street. I know that Rich DeCarlo will be bringing some exciting programs, talented artists, and art classes to Ansonia. We are very excited about the new addition in our downtown. We have other new businesses and restaurants opening. Last week, the Polish Pantry opened in Upper Persian Drive. They offered a wide array of Polish foods. Their post received over 327 likes. Next week, a grand opening of a Casa Bianca Italian restaurant will be opening on Lower Main Street. And the owner has reported that they already are swamped with customers. By the end of the year, we will have two new restaurants, including Palm and Chefrego. Both Spanish-American restaurants opening on Main Street across from City Hall. Both locations are undergoing extensive build-outs. Of course, our Ansonia Chargers are 9-0, and they will be playing Nogatuck in the annual Thanksgiving football game, who is also 9-0, at 10:00 AM at the Field, Nolan Field. I will see you there. Looking forward to a 10-0 record. It's amazing how they are ranked number nine with no losses. It's funny because I ranked them number one. Speaking of winning records, I would like to congratulate the winning teams. Our soccer girls, Youth 14, the Valley Sirens, placed first in the league. And our cheerleaders, the D8 small white state champions, D12 small white state champions, and D14 large red state champions. Congratulations to the D8 through to D12 cheerleaders for winning the regional championships in New Hampshire. They will now be advancing to the Nationals in December, so good luck to them. Football, Youth 14, Pop Warner. I just want to make it clear, you are the champions to us. They played, but they were disqualified because they only had a certain amount of members on the team. And they had a 16-0 lead in that game, and they had called the game. So unfortunately, that's the way the rules are with the Pop Warner. Congratulations to all the athletes, coaches, their families, for making Ansonia proud. I also want to thank our softball and soccer boards, Melissa Riddick and Steve Kish. They have put a lot of time and energy into their dedication and devotion, has not gone unnoticed. Also, congratulations to Senator George Logan in retaining his state senate seat, and Cara Rochelle for earning the opportunity to represent our community in the State House of Representatives. I look forward to working with both for the betterment of our city. Thank you. God bless you all. God bless the great city of Ansonia. Have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving.
If you all have any questions for the mayor. Mr. Marine Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Tonight, we're looking for the Board of Aldermen's authorization on an agreement for the Ansonia Library. This is an agreement between the city and the City Hall Union, UPSU, that will allow us to transition one full-time position into three part-time positions, with two of those part-time positions at a special $11 per hour rate. And this, in effect, will allow us to increase the coverage at the library by nineteen and a half hours at a savings of $10,000 to the department. This is a spectacular example, another amazing example, of how the city and its unions can work together for the betterment of this community. And I really want to thank the UPSU president, the unit president Rita St. Jacques, the library director. library director and unit member Jennifer Lester, and the union counsel Liz Ditman for the cooperation here and collaboration of putting an agreement that has really moved us forward on all sides here. I really want to give a round of applause to them. And this isn't the first time we've been able to collaborate with the unions on tremendous results. Of course, we have the HSA's incorporated into two union contracts a couple of years back, at a wonderful savings to the city, and also a real value to the workers. We're in the middle right now. I could update the Board on our police union negotiations. Those are still ongoing, and I'll have more updates. And I also want to inform the Board that we do have a new union petition from our arms department. Likely, we will be negotiating two contracts, one for EMTs and one for supervisors. And of course, I want to welcome that unit and the union to the city, and that is actually the International Association of EMTs and Paramedics. Moving on from that, we have an ordinance meeting on Monday, the 26th. So it's this upcoming Monday, and we're going to address parking rates with input from the police, and we are going to be looking at the possibility of a leash law as well in Ansonia. If there are any other ideas for ordinances, any other suggestions that the Aldermen may have, or something you want to revisit, let me know in the next two days, and I'll make sure that when that agenda goes out, that that is referenced on the meeting agenda. Other than that, we have some executive session business, but I have nothing else unless you have any questions or follow-ups on anything that we've discussed.
Any questions? Thank you. Sheila O'Malley, Government Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Good evening. Wickley Avenue almost completed. The contractors are working on their final items, their checklist, and then we will be announcing a ribbon cutting for that event and a energizing of the lights, or I think that's where it's called, right? Mayor will be having that. Segments three and four, we just met with DOT and talked to members of the Federal Highway Administration about rights of way. So that's going to be getting underway, discussing with three property owners about a small segment of their property that we're going to need for easements. So that will be underway, fully underway in the spring. 65 Main Street, we're going to be asking city departments of the city to take a look at the furniture that's left over in 65 Main and what's not needed in the city or for departments. Mike De Lassio of Public Works is going to help with removal of that, or we're going to seek bids to get a company to move out the furniture that's not needed. Just had a PD Building Committee meeting with Chairman Heon, Paul Heon, and the members and the chief, and discussing next steps. So you're going to see some movement. We're going to put out to bid the environmental work that can be done concurrently with the repairs that are going to be needed. The roof, Public Works, I think, is going to take a look at that and see what can be patched, because it's too cold to start the roof. But the specs will be done this winter, and we'll be looking to do the roof first on 65 Main. That's the big project. Also, going to move inside on some removal of ceiling tiles. There's about a football field worth of ceiling tiles to be removed. They're not contaminated in that building, so just worried about the dust containment, but that will also be ongoing. So you're going to see a lot of movement coming up with 65 Main. SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass, first, we're moving ahead with the overall master development plan, our so-called master development plan. We've interviewed three firms, and we'll be selecting an engineering and environmental firm to begin that study, which will be a huge undertaking, because it's going to be an A2 survey. We're going to look at possible roadway connection, looking at subsurface testing, especially the underground storage tanks. There's two left on the property, so we want to test those and find out whether they can be, remain in place or have to be removed. Lot of work to be done on Ansonia Copper and Brass, but it's kind of, well, it's exciting, I think, because it's a big opportunity for the city. SHW, if you recall, had a partial collapse of the building in 2017, and what we're looking now to do is to demolish that building. It's on 3.5 acres of land, and it's adjacent, directly adjacent to Ansonia Copper and Brass. Actually, may have been at one point part of Farrell or Ansonia Copper and Brass, but they're all sort of interconnected. But we are seeking demolition funding through the state for that parcel. And that will begin the process of, you know, demolition that's going to occur over the span of the next few years to completely demolish that SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass. So we have a request in under grants that we're seeking to secure. That's one of them. We've also got our, I think I mentioned, a planning study request in for the next segment of our greenway, which will indicate how we connect with Seymour and how much that project will cost. There is a grant that we have submitted for North State Street and Cliff?
South Cliff.
South Cliff.
And State.
And State, for road improvements, safety improvements. We are hoping to get that grant, but it'll be a while before we hear on that. And there's also another opportunity, about a half a million dollars, for development. And that development has to employ low to moderate income, a certain number of low to moderate income residents or individuals. So any development that's going to spur some job growth, there's an opportunity for Ansonia to take advantage of that, and I'm hoping to have some announcement on a developer who may take advantage of that opportunity. I think that's about it for now. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I do.
Oh, good.
As you may have heard, they got a mailer out saying that Wickley Avenue is completed so the bus stops can go back. Well, a lot of people's been calling, okay, about that problem that we have on Wickley and Jackson.
Jackson, yep.
Right.
Yep.
So they are under the assumption it's finished.
Oh, okay.
So can't we get something out?
So that's a clarification, and yeah, we can post something on our page. They are going to mill, Mayor knows more about it, but they are going to mill that area and, you know, try to.
Well, I know that, but, I mean, everybody's been.
Good point. And I also want to, you know, just touch briefly on, the mayor talked about all of our championship teams that we're really proud of, and then Mr. Kish was up here, and he was pointing out the deficiencies in our fields, and they certainly need some help. He's right about that. And we talked about, we talked about a marketing and feasibility study, and we're going to make a formal request to Valley Community Foundation for that funding, because I think, again, I'll just, it bears repeating, I think, you know, what needs to be done is a total assessment of what we have available, of who uses it, of what the age groups are, of what we need to fix, and what we could, you know, we could switch over and where the real deficiencies are. So we're going to move forward on that. Dr. Scheward, I'm hoping you're still willing to help out with that. So just wanted to add that. I know it doesn't sound like much, but you really do need an assessment of our fields, because we have a lot of people with a lot of opinions, but we really want a professional to come in and say, hey, here's what you need, here's what you don't need. So, with that. Any other questions? That's disappointing to me. Okay, thank you.
Greg Martin, Director of Constituent Services.
Good evening, President Bakar, members of the Board of Aldermen. A couple of items. Year two of the Winter Playground is moving forward to get prepped up. Public Works will be cutting back the hill. We launched it last year. He's going to make the hill maybe 20 to 50 feet higher for sledding. Hoping to add ice skating again this year. Fire pit will come back and food trucks as well. Planning a grand opening event mid-December, weather permitting, of course, certainly hopefully by the end of December. Two weeks ago, or last week, North Main Street was Route 115, the vegetation overgrowth, about 1,000-foot length from the retaining wall at the Armory all the way down to the first set of billboards down there. It's about 1,000 feet. Had all the vegetation removed. It was sprayed by the UI, it was 90% paid for by the UI, and Public Works came in and they basically did the backend cleanup on it, so it looks very nice when you drive down North Main. Assumption Church is also going to start an extensive cleanup behind Assumption School and the church as well. So by the springtime, that should be looking a lot better going forward. And this week, we launched the trolley tracks, which were made from, trolley track collectibles made from tracks that were taken up from Wickley Avenue. We launched the first 25, sold out pretty quickly on that, so I've got another 25 inventory getting made. We'll keep making them as quickly as we can sell them. And all of that proceeds from the trolley track sales will be going toward the restoration of a firehouse belt that's also down the storage at Public Works, and then once that's restored, relocated to the Webster Memorial Park. And these will be for sale next weekend at the Holiday Market at the Armory. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What happened to mine?
No, I have yours downstairs.
Okay.
It has your name on it.
Okay.
It says Chicago.
We're going to have a ceremony.
You're the 25th one that sold us out, so now you've got another batch coming in. Okay, you're all set then.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Can you just pass this out to everybody who's here? We have some additional handouts. Actually, a vote meeting just prior to this meeting. The resets, two, three. Also, there's information here about the request that we're going to have on a motion for contract of fire apparatus, SCBA apparatus, the fire department. I'd like to review, as part of the controller approvals, the funding process with you before we get to that. So we'll be happy to go over all of that at that time on the grants. And again, the municipal report, this will be a second one. This is not the original one. This is one that was developed from a meeting about 15 minutes prior to this one. That's there. Other than that, we're getting ready to send out stuff for budget for next year, and we're still working on finalizing the audit, the federal lump sum process. We are working on that. Headlines coming, so other than that, we're moving along. And that's it. Happy, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Bouchere, will be acting upon this second handout tonight?
We'll need to do both tonight.
Thank you. LT, Lieutenant Lynch, sorry.
Good evening, thank you. December 1st starts winter parking in East Side Street for the entire winter season. The rules and regulations have been posted on the city's website. Press releases will be going out, including on our Facebook page. We are still in training. We have two officers, two candidates in the state police academy of Meredith. We have one officer on the street finishing up his field training. Once that's done, we will be back up to, for manpower, we still have some new, trying to get us back up to complete. As you can see by my very port, attempt to grow a beard, we are participating in No Shade, No Member. We raised just about $2,000 for the Cancer Foundation. We're going to continue that through December, raising money again, and this time to go towards our Shop With The Cop, where we provide privileged families with the opportunity to shop for Christmas at Target. We had our Thanksgiving food drive. Last Friday, I stopped shop. We were able to donate to Christ Church, Assumption, and BH Care for Carlo's food, along with about below $1,000, and give cars to stop shop. We'll be holding that again on December 14th at Stop The Shop, and December 15th at the Shop With The Cop. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike De Lassio, is he in the crowd? Public Works Director, thank you, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. To make a brief, just a few things. We're busy this month, very busy. First snowstorm went very well. Supposed to be like a two-inch dusting, and it turned out to be six-inch storm, so we had to call everybody in. It was an all-nighter for the first one, went well, a couple of trucks blew down, but things went good. Folk season ends on November 30th, thank God, because now we can get back to doing our most important things on the streets. We widened Byron Avenue this past month. Big difference, three, four feet wider, people can travel easier, big difference. We've got to put a center line down as soon as the weather breaks. Crosswalks are stopped, we got most of them done, but with this rain and the cold weather, we couldn't finish our crosswalks this year, but most of them are done. We've been out cleaning catch bases. Got Conley Park concession stand 90% done. All we have to do is water sewer, got the new roof on it, the windows, it's painted, got our new lights installed. So hopefully in the springtime, we've got about a month of it, be up and running for whatever we do up there. And that's about it with that, but I need some requests for referendum money tonight to be transferred. Purchasing a new loader. The money's in a referendum, but it's in different lines. I just need to get it transferred from one line to the next. I'm pretty sure you have a copy of our numbers. Roadside machine, we didn't purchase this year, because we bought one from scraps, so there's 100,000 left over in a roadside machine. So we're going to use that money. We had a one-ton dump truck that we got cheaper than what we had in the budget, and also John Deere loader. So between them, three lines, we have enough money to purchase this new loader. That loader's being used six days a week for the last 10 years, so it's starting to get tired. Before major repairs end, I think it's time to get rid of it and get a few bucks for a cell, and also pay for the machine, and we'll, we use it every day. We use it for snow, we use it for the transfer station, so it's a big, our busiest machine that we have here, so it's 10 years, it's getting to the point that it could be taking $20,000, $30,000 hits. Seals to be done, transies could be going, so now's the time to get rid of it and purchase a new machine. So I just need the Board's approval on transfer of funds, so we can purchase this next month. That's about it.
Any questions for Mr. De Lassio?
Yes, sir.
Mike, I want to thank you. Good hard work trying to get together with me on that, that.
The pavement.
Downstairs.
Yes.
And I got one more complaint.
Sure.
Between, this is the new street again.
Yeah.
Between Clarkson.
Yeah.
And Dwight. It's coming up some that.
I see it.
The blacktop, you see it? Okay.
They must have put it down, had to be a cold winter.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's starting to peel.
Yeah, I saw it.
We noticed it.
Yeah, so what?
I'm almost thinking they should almost mill most of that road in the spring and redo it, because the paving job is not good.
No, no.
I mean, the whole street come out beautiful sidewalks, curving, but the asphalt was a terrible job. It's rippling. I'm thinking maybe we should sit down with the firm and maybe try to get it milled down at least an inch, just give it a new top coat in the spring, because it's already peeling. You're right. I saw it.
Yeah, because I talked to a few of the guys that were out there, and they were like, no, this is done. I said, no, it's not done.
That ain't done. That's not a good job. We paved, you know, a lot of streets this year in Ansonia, and they come out beautiful.
I know.
No seams, not, you see the seam down the center.
I know.
It is rippling, where you said there was rippling, and it's wavy all the way down the road. the road.
Yeah, okay.
That's something we gotta address.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Committee reports. Finance Committee, act have a motion to pay all bills that found to be accurate and correct. Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. DeLibro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Covered Public Works. Arms Committee?
For the month of October, two thousand eighteen, Arms responded to two hundred eighty-nine calls per service. Of those two hundred eighty-nine calls, a hundred and fifty-five were transported to Berwick. And the grand total that they generated for the month was eighty thousand, eleven dollars and seventy cents.
Any questions for Mr. Blackwell? Fire Committee, Mr. Schuer.
Yeah, very briefly, for the month of October, the fire department responded to fifty-two calls, highlighted by seventeen motor vehicle assists, fifteen system faults, five structure fires, and three hazmat incidents, for a total of fifty-two total calls.
Thank you. Anything for ordinance, Mr. Hammett, I'm in the tent this night. Housing Committee, Mr. Cassetti.
Right, the Federal Housing Authority of Ansonia had a meeting on October twenty-fourth, and the Executive Director, Stephen Nagano. The Housing Authority is looking into quotes for installing cameras at the Mount Senior Hayes complex. Appraisals are in for the scattered site property and are being reviewed by HUD. Ansonia Housing Authority is working with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Fair Housing, towards resolutions of voluntary compliance agreements. The Halloween party that they had was a big success. That was on October twenty-fifth. In the Housing Choice voucher program, there'll be two family self-sufficiencies, participants that have fully completed the program and will be graduating. Getting ready for a launch for November one, the Ansonia Housing Monthly Newsletter for the residents. There was also a resolution that was passed for the adoption of payment standards of amounts of a hundred percent of the HUD fiscal year two thousand nineteen. It's a fair market rent and Section eight tenants. And Ansonia's lumped with Seymour on this, and the efficiencies come out to eight hundred and eighty-two dollars a month. One bedroom is eleven-eleven, two bedrooms is thirteen-seventy-three, three bedroom seventeen-twenty, four bedroom twenty-seventy-eight, and five bedroom two thousand one hundred and nine dollars. And that's about it.
You have the committees? Okay?
Yes.
Mr. Rivers?
Our committee?
I just wanted to agree with them that that board really doesn't help at all. That's it.
Thank you, we talked about it before.
Yeah.
Thank you. Board of Enforcement and Taxation Recommendations. Mr. Cassetti? You have both documents?
Yeah. You need a bread or?
Well, you can mention which motions.
All right, a motion for arms, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars transferred for boat contingency to the Public Works, building repairs and ECD professional services. The second motion was for arms, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar increase in other departments expenses and revenue line of boat department.
And that was an insurance payment?
That's an insurance thing. And the BOE finance, a seventy thousand dollars increase in the other department expenses and revenue lines. I make a motion to accept those.
For a second? Mr. Blackwell, all in favor, say aye.
Just a quick discussion if I can.
Sure.
Last one, the seventy thousand dollars, that's the first installment on the boiler repair at the Ansonia Middle School. It's anticipated we're gonna get about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. They have a temporary boiler in place currently, they also have in the referendum for replacement of that boiler. I need to have ongoing discussions as to how we're gonna proceed getting from here to there. But currently, they have two bills out there for fifty-two thousand and twenty thousand to get that temporary one up and running, something like twelve thousand dollars a month for the rental on that boiler over there. So that one's that. The arms building insurance piece is Jared's projection for what we're gonna get. That money will go into revenue and will not be expended unless we get it into revenue. So that's kinda gonna be in and out, and the other part is Jared has been talking about for, I think, a month on the other part of it. And then I have discussion on the other one.
Okay. Continuing on, Mr. Cassetti.
Which one is that? Oh, these are the ones you're speaking of, the...
November thirteenth?
November thirteenth.
Boat meeting.
Boat meeting, right, okay. BOE, ten thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollar increased budget to defray the nursing staff cost at Assumption School.
That was table.
That was table. Right, that should've ended. All right, and the police, one thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for increase in expenses and revenue line of animal fund. That was approved.
So you make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Thank you.
All of these will be motion to accept. Fire Department, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars for the contingency to operate transferring out. Other business was Public Works, Communication number three previously approved at ten-one-eighteen meeting, seventy thousand, one hundred dollars transfer from boat contingency to building projects tabled by the BOA at ten-nine-eighteen. Mr. DeLassio will request funding from WPCA. Good luck. All right, and that was it.
Thank you. For a second? Mr. Schuer, do you have anything to add?
Are you missing? Are you in discussion first?
Sure.
Okay, we go too far here. The, let me get the right piece here. The, let me start with the WPCA and Mr. DeLassio. He made a valiant effort, and he secured a splitting of the part of the bill, and so there will be a twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars being allocated to repair that sewer line from Prospect to Lock Street from the WPCA. And so, the original request of seventy thousand is brought down to this forty-two thousand, six hundred number, which is the net of, after we get the WPC, WPCA money in play. So he did a very good job with that. And the, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars was originally set up as a, maybe we'll take it out of reserve, maybe we'll take it out of fund balance. I came up with a solution that I discussed with both, and what we did basically is, we have money in the budget currently for vans, which is, the only van we currently have is a police station. I had thirty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus an additional, I think, a hundred and fifty for interest on the vans process. And because of, I guess, the slowness of it occurring, I had thought we would be in full swing by this time. I feel that we can save that money from the reserve and utilize this money, so I requested them to do a transfer from the vans account to use for the FEMA grant, thereby not going into the reserve or asking for boat contingency. Now, on the off chance that we get closer to the end of the year, we do need this money for the, extra money for the vans, but I don't anticipate it. But if we did, then we'd have to come back and ask for it, but I think we'll make it through to June fine, and we'll be able to pay a little bit less, because we haven't borrowed any more than the two million, so I think we'll be okay with the net amount on the vans, and I think it's a valid way to go. But I want to make sure you're okay with it, and you understand what it is I'm proposing, and that they voted on. So it's more, it's not a use of fund balance or boat contingency, it's a transfer within the debt service to lessen the amount we're gonna pay down on the sixty-five, the police station vans, and utilize it for the packs this year. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. And then as a second, Barry, before we go too far, I handed out the slip with all the pieces of this fire department piece. Okay? Which, the fire commission approved, boat approved, a maximum number of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We may not use all of that, but we needed to have it available. The grant itself pays for fifty-two packs, I believe, fifty-two packs, but we require fifty-eight in our complement. And the way we do things here, we needed an additional bottle, we needed some additional masks, writ packs, there's some administration work that's gonna be needed, that they're gonna have done for the grant itself. There's also the retrofit for Squad Nine to accept the new bottles. The new bottles are going from forty-five hundred PSI to fifty-five hundred PSI, so it's a little bit longer, but it's a forty-five minute bottle instead of a thirty-minute bottle. They're gonna have to do a little bit of retrofitting, so that's in there. The fit testing to make, to get us past our deadline. Our certification runs out in November, and we won't make it. It also includes, they had one bid that came through, and it was also included, then subsequently giving us the two thousand eighteen certification, which is not currently available, but it's a good thing to have, because three-year, or three different generations of certification, and the packs would become nonusable. So the current ones we're buying are two-twelve with the upgrade to two thousand eighteen. So that's in there. There's also some radio communication to work with these packs in this. But the biggest piece of the puzzle is with shipments that I've attached, their bid number of four hundred and sixty-seven, could be four hundred and fifty-seven, my eyes aren't really that clear. Four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then an additional eleven, twelve thousand dollars is for the retrofit, and the balance of it will be some of the peripheral or ancillary equipment that we keep. I don't know if there's any questions you have, this slight contingency, but I'm hopeful that we're gonna be under the five hundred and twenty total. But, you know, we're there, if we have to, that'll give the fire department everything that they need. All in all, three hundred and forty thousand from the grant, which is very good, and the city will kick in the balance of about a hundred and seventy thousand total max.
Thank God that we got the grants.
Grant, I was hopeful we were gonna get it. The girls did a great job in writing all of this up. It's been like three or four years that they've done it, and I'm very happy that we got it, because otherwise I'd be here asking you for half a million dollars.
Right. I know you applied like at least three years consecutively.
Yeah, it just worked out very favorable for the town.
Right, thank you. Mr. Schuer, do you have anything to add?
Can we approve that? No, you can need to prove that.
We do approve that one as well. Her motion was...
I was gonna say, I'll amend the amount from seventy thousand, one hundred to forty-two thousand, six hundred. That's on that third bit of, fourth bit of business here, the third, third motion, I'm sorry, third motion.
Is that right, Mr. Bouchere?
I am, I'm sorry, I'll come up.
I wrote down what you said.
Whatever is on there for the grant. Last, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six one nine.
That's good, that's...
That's a good number.
The next one down, for Public Works, Communication number three.
It's forty-two six.
Forty-two six. So I just amended it to forty-two six.
Okay.
You need a second?
For a second on all these motions?
Second.
Mr. Philippone, up to the punch tonight. All in favor, say, all Mr. Schuer, you're all set?
We're gonna vote on, and then Ruth will first.
We're gonna vote on, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Schuer.
On that grant, I make a motion to accept the FEMA AFG grant for the purchase of air packs in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, and to award the bid for air packs to the only bidder, Shipman's Fire Equipment Company, in an amount not to exceed the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, including the air packs, ancillary equipment, retooling of Squad Nine for the new air pack filling station, the administration of the grant, radio equipment to communicate through the air packs in a small contingency, and to direct the mayor to sign all documents required for the execution of the grant and the purchase of the equipment.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Schuer. Thank you, Rich. Land Use Department report, I'd like to make a, just a comment that the Land Use Department took in twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents last month. Like to have a motion to accept that. Departments report, Mr. Philippone?
Second.
Mr. Chicago Rivers, second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Tax Collector report and request for refunds. Mr. Cassetti?
Make a motion to pay if all found to be correct.
For a second, Mr. Rivers. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Accidents and claims?
Refer them.
Is that a motion?
All of them, make a motion. What are there? There's two of them, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Refer them to the incorporation council?
Second.
Mr. Philippone, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications. Motion to accept, communications in place on file, Mr. Anyone, anyone?
Mr. Cassetti?
Right.
Seconded by Mr. DeLibro, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first one is from Mike DeLassio, Public Works Director, requesting the transfer of funds for the purchase of a payloader. Mr. DeLassio, you wanna tell us the amount of that payloader?
One hundred and fifty-five dollars, seven, one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Bouchere, this is all covered in referendum money?
I believe you have extra money in several items that you're transferring to the VACO account or whatever it was.
Right. It was all out of two different lines of referendum money. It was all covered in the referendum. All the things that were on the trucks that I purchased, that we didn't use all the money. And the most I would post is one of those, so it's all in my referendum, it's not important for who made it, I'll just assign it.
Thank you. Sounds good, is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Cassetti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communication number two.
I'll read this. Dear Board of Alderman, I, Frederick Nyes, and father, were in the middle of purchasing twenty-one nickels when we were notified that there was a blight lien on the property. Just to make the board aware, there is a tax lien alone on the property of over sixty-five thousand dollars, not including the other liens and such mortgages. As of now, the counting blight liens are over two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which is over double the value of the house, and with the owner of the property being in a nursing home, they will never be able to be paid, nor the property to be able to be cleaned up. I am still interested in purchasing the property, and would promise to fix up all the issues in a short period of time, as well as pay the amount of five thousand dollars to blight. Anything more than this makes the house not worth purchasing due to all the other departments on the house. Please let me know of your decision as soon as possible.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure, any discussion on this? Mr. Blackwell?
As we said earlier before, as long as, you know, we didn't spend any money on remediation of it, as long as we get coverage, is what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with it, I don't know how you guys feel. I just don't want the city to lose money if we paid anybody out to remedy.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm with you on that one.
Mr. Murray, you, are you familiar with this?
I am, and I think we could ask the Blight Department...
I am, and, and I think we could ask the Blight Department just to confirm if there is any remediation lien on the property versus the blight lien, you know, for the public's knowledge and for the board's knowledge, I think, you know, all of the Blackwell stated it, simply enough. The remediation lien means we actually spent money on the property to clean it up, and those costs, traditionally, we make every effort to recoup them. It's lost money. But if there simply is a blight lien ticking away, we can certainly, we have certain, in the past negotiated to get the property into the hands of someone who's willing to clean up, and, um, with the board's approval, we certainly can negotiate it on the condition that, say, maybe sixty days after purchase, the blighted conditions are eliminated. I would defer that to the Blight Department, because they will traditionally start that negotiation and determine what a fair amount of time would be for the new owner to ameliorate the, the blighted conditions, and sometimes there are building violations mixed in there as well. So I actually wanted to defer to, uh, to, to Mr. Blackwell downstairs and then to Ron, what appropriate amount of time would be.
Well, I, I just wanted to add that, you know, obviously, it's a new, it's, it's gonna be a new homeowner, they weren't responsible for what took place. And the whole purpose of the blight program, whether we get the money back or not, purpose is, the intent is to turn the house around and get it reused and not just sit there fallow. So I just want you to keep that in mind, that's the real reason. It's not, I mean, although we'd like our money back and we need the money, it's, that's really not the priority, the priorities to get these back on the tax roll.
Okay.
Is there any precedent for this amount, and I just randomly threw out that they were gonna pay five thousand?
It's certainly a substantial amount.
Yeah.
That we're gonna waive, possibly. It's your pleasure, gentlemen. Mr. Blackwell, wanna make a motion?
Corporation Council's advice and defer to the building department.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Rivers, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Communication Number Three, we have a letter from the Gordon Moselli American Legion Post Number Fifty, we've all, um, familiar with this and we've read it, so I'll just place it on file. Communication Number Four is from Mr. Marine, the agreement for expanding staff at the library. He discussed this already in his, um, public official session segment, and I think we're gonna vote on this, uh, the new business. So, continues with, under new business, thank you. Okay, resolutions, we have one resolution tonight. Actually, it's an amended resolution. I'll read it, that I, chanted by Terry Suwala, Town and City Clerk of Ansonia, do hereby certify that the following is due in a correct copy of a resolution adopted by the Ansonia Board of Alderman at its duly called and held meeting on the number twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, at which a quorum was present and acting throughout, and that the resolution has not been modified, rescinded, or revoked, and is at present in full force and effect. Resolved, that the Board of Alderman may enter into and with, and deliver to the State of Connecticut, Department of Energy Service, Emergency Services, and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that David S. Casetti, as Mayor of the City of Ansonia, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Ansonia, and to do and perform all acts and things which he, she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The undersigned further certifies that David S. Casetti now holds the office of Mayor and that he has held that office since December second, two thousand and thirteen. The witness whereof, the undersigned has executed this certificate this twentieth day of November two thousand and eighteen. Their motion to, um, pass this?
Motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement.
Is there a second? Mr. Schuer? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resignations, we have, um, three resignations tonight, I'll go through them, from the Cultural Commission, Adrian Duhanchik from the Ansonia Library Board, Eileen Eamon, and also from the Board of Apportment and Taxation, Donna DuKlos, is there a motion to accept those resignations and submit letters of, uh, thank you to these people?
Make a motion.
Mr. Philippone? Mr. Rivers, seconded? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, no appointments. New business. Firehouse Roof Referendum Approval.
Let's do that, I make that motion.
Mr. Marine, are we into a, we all set with that? Okay, is there a motion on the floor from Mr. Casetti, is there a second? Mr. Schuer? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, action on, number two, action on the library, the memo of understanding regarding Communication Number Four. Mr. Marine, you already highlighted it. Is there any, any discussion on this matter? Think it's a solid idea. Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Kane? Motion?
Motion.
Seconded by? Mr. Philippone? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other new business? And the old business? Bridges to Executive Session. Mr. Marine, your pleasure?
Uh, Mayor, Sheila O'Malley, and Rich Bishara.
Motion to, uh...
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Should we add something we're gonna carry over to new business?
What was that? That was memo of understanding.
Yeah, we got it.